Preparing Students for Success in a Changing Global Society.
All right, good evening everyone and welcome to the first board meeting of the new school year. First, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. St. Lawrence, can you lead us, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started with our meeting, we just wanted to recognize that 16 years ago today, about 3,000 men, women, and children lost their lives in the 9/11 attacks. So, if we could just bow our heads for a moment of silence to pray for those families that were left behind. Thank you. All right, next we have a list of presentations and I'll just pass it over to Dr. Bremm.
Thank you, I'm going to make my way to the podium. Quickly. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to start off this evening by honoring a full retiree that we don't usually, we usually do this at the end of the year, but this year we have someone sort of retiring early out in the school year. Cindy Ross, a nurse at Tophelan, has worked in Plainville for over 25 years. First, she was a one-to-one nurse for a particular student and then as a building nurse. Last spring, when Cindy notified me that she was retiring, or thinking about retiring in the early fall, she was already planning on how she'd help make the transition for the Tophelan new nurse as smooth as possible. She has certainly done that for us and more. She's extremely dedicated and I would now like to invite Lynn Lukwakup, her school principal, to say a few words. Lynn.
Hello Cindy. Tonight, I'm here to talk about Cindy Ross, who is retiring after 25 years of working in the Plainville schools. Cindy started at Tophelan as the nurse at the same time that I started as the principal. So, it's an understatement to say that I'm going to miss her. When I tell you that she was our nurse, you probably are thinking that she took temperatures, gave out ice packs, and fixed up scrapes and cuts. And yes, she did all that. Certainly, a lot of ice packs, bandaged knees, scraped elbows, and baby teeth left her office. But, she did even more than that. So, here's a partial list of what Cindy did at Tophelan. Cindy took care of kids with some pretty serious health issues. She waged a war against peanuts, lice, and dirty hands. Cindy placed a plastic bag into the hands of many folks who looked just a little green. She pulled slivers out of fingers, ticks out of skin, and gum out of hair. She ended many visits with the following warning: "And don't pick at it." Cindy discreetly laundered and replaced wet pants with clean, dry ones. She fixed eyeglasses, hearing aids, shoes, favorite necklaces, ripped clothes, and broken zippers. She wrote up healthcare plans and 504 plans. She monitored glucose levels and she read food labels. She suppressed student giggling while giving the maturation talk to generations of Plainville students. She handed out inhalers, pills, ointments, and EpiPens. She trained staff to use inhalers, EpiPens, ointments, and to give out pills. She made sure every child's health records were intact. She tested eyes and ears and the straightness of spines. She listened to a lot of adult ailments, gave advice, but always ended with, "I don't write prescriptions, you need to go to the doctor." She packaged up baby teeth for the tooth fairy. She worked at the Fall Fair, the Open House, PTO events, and the Ice Cream Social. She cajoled field trip forms out of teachers' hands and packed up little blue backpacks of medicine. She remembered every family and every kid for the past 20-plus years. She rolled out the big red emergency bag during the fire drills. She baked marvelous Christmas cookies, apple pies, cakes, and muffins for us. Cindy held the hand of anxious parents with sick children. She taught injured, wobbly kids how to use their new crutches. She assured little ones that they could make it through the day and that mommy would be home waiting for them. She spotted pink eye from a mile away. She tracked down missing students during lockdown drills. She gave the diarrhea and vomit talk to all new parents. She cut scratchy tags out of the principal's shirts. And she listened to Tommy Yakes, Tommy Yakes stories, when she knew the real problem was more than many adults could bear. Cindy did this and much, much more, always with kindness and a loving heart. This year, we started the school year with this book. It's called "One and Only You" by Linda Krauts. It ended, at the end, with a little line that reminded me of Cindy. At the end, the mama mouth, the mama fish tells the baby fish as he's going off into the world, "There's only one you in this great big world," she said. Make it a better place. So Cindy, there's only one Cindy in this great big world, and she has made Tophelan and Plainville schools a better place. I speak for all of us at Tophelan when I thank you Cindy for the years of hard work, love, and caring that you put into our school. You've taken care of us and now it's time for you to spend all of your time taking care of yourself, your husband Doug, your kids, and those adorable grandkids. And rest assured that you've made the world and Tophelan a better place. Best wishes for a long and healthy retirement. Come on up Cindy.
Me too. I'll be on this forever. And how about, so these two daughters that are here, oh, just one. I think Lynn also forgot sewing. Nurses are always doing sewing, which I don't understand because that's not something you probably learned in nursing school. All right, now, back to a tradition that we started last school year called Everyday Tonight, I'm honoring two separate Everyday Heroes. The first one I'd like to bring up is Tim Delena and his nominator, Mr. Stephen Mashad. So, come on up, right over here. Let me tell you why we've, why Tim was nominated. Tim is a safety monitor at Plainville High and he was nominated by Steve Mashad. Tim has worked here for many, many years and is extremely punctual, consistent, calm, and effective at his job. He asks for very little, but provides a great service to the students and staff at PHS. I think he would be an excellent candidate for the Everyday Hero Honor. This weekend, I was chatting with the three high school administrators at the football game where Tim also was, and it was noted that Tim is very dedicated and no one could remember a time when he was ever even absent. I would like to invite Steve Mashad up to say a few more words about Tim Delena.
Thank you, Dr. Bremm. I'd like to start by congratulating Cindy on your retirement. Congratulations, well deserved. It's my pleasure to speak here tonight on behalf of my friend and colleague, Tim Delena. In my opinion, the Everyday Hero Award was created for individuals like Tim. Those employees who come to work with students day in and day out without much fanfare or acknowledgement. Well, tonight, we get to acknowledge Tim for his hard work and dedication to the Plainville students and staff. The term "school security" has taken on a whole new meaning over the last 20 years or so that Tim has been employed as our PHS School Security Officer. And in this new day and age, as everyone knows, we are asking so much more out of our security staff. I believe that the service that Tim provides to the school is of the utmost importance. I've done a little bit of my own research and I'm fairly certain that Tim is the first security officer ever employed by Plainville Schools. All right, let's just go with that. We're going to go with that. Until just a couple of years ago, with the addition of Mr. Humphries, he was the only school security guard that we ever needed. Anybody who's ever walked through the hallways of PHS during class time knows that our security staff is second to none in terms of making sure that those students are where they should be. And this isn't an accident. This is a direct result of Tim's daily, Tim's daily efforts. Tim's consistency, professionalism, and calm demeanor are his best assets. Let's face it, he usually interacts with students when it's quite possibly not their best day. And whether he is handling a student in a medical crisis or escorting a student to the administration to face the music, Tim has a unique ability to add a sense of calmness to the situation. He is masterful at de-escalating students so they do not get themselves into further trouble. These unique attributes are just a couple of examples of what makes Tim our Everyday Hero. So, in closing, I want to say thank you to Tim on behalf of the PHS family of teachers, students, and administrators. We appreciate all of your hard work and efforts over the years to keep our building safe and to create an environment that is conducive to learning. Congratulations, Tim.
Scott Martin is our facilities manager and he nominated a large group of custodial and maintaining staff from our middle school. So, tonight, we're going to be honoring the following custodians and maintainers. Billy Olet, Don Levek, Tom White, Greg Massey. And then maintainers, Alex North, Jim Dossett, Mike Dixon, Terry Archer. And if they're here, some of our summer custodians, Jeremy Klepakie, Mike Matthews, and Alexis Divert. Sorry about that. I would like to tell you why you've been nominated. Here's what Scott had to say. Our maintenance department has proven time after time how selfless they are and always put district faculty and staff first. Not only are they bombarded with work orders, daily emergencies, and they always attend to things without hesitation. They always manage to quickly resolve issues and get back to whatever they were doing without thinking twice about interruptions. This summer, the steam lab at the middle school was a big undertaking, along with cleaning out the 600 storage area. They consistently proved their worth by getting the job done, whatever that might be. They are very talented, professional, and loyal employees who do their jobs well and are a very important part of Plainville schools. I believe they should be recognized, although they will tell you that they don't want to be. I can't think of enough, I can't thank them enough for all they do. On a personal note, I was very impressed with the work done to get the steam lab ready for the start of this school year. Because of our talented in district staff at the middle school of Plainville, we saved thousands of dollars by doing work like the steam lab in-house. I echo Scott's appreciation and I want to thank you all for all that you do for our district. And I'd like to invite you all up to receive your certificates and for a picture. So, come on up, all of those gentlemen and ladies.
You've got a name, Jeff. And Stone and I are here tonight. And Sir, thank you, appreciate it very much. And Roger, thank you.
I just wanted to add a couple of things because I heartily agree with Scott. Wonderful group. And not only did they do that whole steam lab, which I enthusiastically welcome you all to come over and take a look at, it's wonderful. They took care of all of that. But this year, I had to move more classrooms than I ever had in the history of the whole time, if I'm not mistaken. So, they were moving classrooms, doing all their regular work, and doing the steam lab, and they did a whole lot of painting, Jeremy and Mike. Painted half the building in the same time that they've done all the other things in the past. So, it was really fantastic. Plus, they were getting direction from about 15 different people at once. This teacher wanted this there, that one over there, they were very patient. So, I would heartily agree. Well done.
And that concludes our Everyday Hero Award for this evening.
Five sets of minutes, so unless there's any corrections or additions, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes for the school year of June 12th, 2017, June 13th, June 19th, July 17th, and July 31st.
Second.
All right, I have a first and a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. If there's anybody that wishes to speak to the Board of Education, you can just step up to the podium and state your name and address. Anyone? All right, moving on. Our council liaison, they have, they have their own meeting tonight, so she's not here, but she did give me a list of things that I could just update you on. Let's see, one is the Dog Park. So, on August 8th, Planning and Zoning voted to make a finding that the Dog Park be referred to the council in conformance with the Plainville's plan of conservation and development. Now, the next step is to decide where the Dog Park's going to be located and the council, I believe they were having a work session this evening to talk about it, and then they will have a public hearing before they decide. So, there's nothing been decided on that yet. Norton Park Memorial Bench Donation. Mr. Lee was notified by Mrs. Irina Collins, who expressed interest in donating a bench in honor of her husband, Conrad Douglas Collins. He was a physician who had an office in Plainville for 40 years. So, it's going to be located at the gazebo on Norton Park Road. It has been ordered and it will be installed in approximately 30 days. So, Mr. Lee said just behalf, on behalf of the town, he wanted to thank Mrs. Collins for her generous donation. Next, let's see, the Heritage Trail Update. Basically, the last council meeting that I was at anywhere where they had citizens' comments, the last route was supposed to go down Perrin Road through a neighborhood. So, that was unanimously, I think, decided they would not do that. So, I think they went back to the drawing board and they're trying to figure out a new, a new trail. I'm sorry, there's a lot of information here. Trying to cut through, cut through the chase. I think they're going to have another information session. They think they have a route proposed that will not go through any neighborhoods and at some point, the council will be approving that. Let's see. There was a new senior citizen bus, minibus, that apparently was purchased. This replaces a 2007 model that's ready for disposal. The Norton Park Timber Guide Rail, oh, apparently they were, they're replacing some, let's see, some timbers, oh, the monies of the fencing, okay, there's 72,000 was submitted as a quote to replace some, I'm sorry, some timber rail fence guards at Norton and Pateroski Parks. Okay, and then the, the last thing is there's a phosphorus removal update. Plainville's one of, I don't know, 10, 12 towns that has been mandated by the state to get rid of the phosphorus out of their water. So, the latest, the state's mandated that it's going to be a cost of an estimated $15.2 million. The state is going to give us back 6.7 million. So, that leaves the local cost of the town of 9.2 million. It says there's limited time to have this project concluded on the November 7th election ballot. So, the town staff is going to recommend that the council do a referendum in early 2018. I know unfortunately, along with everything else, this is sort of not something we have an option about. So, that's about it from the council. Moving on, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Bremm.
I'll head back to the podium. I'd like to start my report off with some updates about the opening of school this year. On the next slide, you'll see our new logo for this year, Inspire, Prepare, and Engage. We're featuring that on all of our presentations, the website, which is almost ready, our brand new one, and district publications. So, you'll see that throughout all of, all things that are Plainville Public Schools this year.
Sorry, we just can't see.
Technical difficulties, please stand by.
Thank you.
Energy saver.
Yeah, it's really saving energy.
Very good, very good.
There they go.
Thank you very much.
At the start of this school year, we received notice that Plainville is ranked number 29 out of 167 districts in a NISH report. This report featured many exceptional ratings for Plainville that include, we are the highest rated district in DURG-E. We received an A-plus rating for health and safety, an A-rating for clubs and activities. We're the third safest district in Hartford County and we're the 12th safest in the whole state of Connecticut. We're rated fifth in Hartford County and 15th in Connecticut on a study of music programs, whoops, I'm sorry, in safety overall. And then on a study of music programs nationally, we ranked 527 for best communities for music education. So, we're very proud of that work and I'd like to, again, thank the Board for all the support they give to faculty and staff that led to these exceptional ratings. Those don't happen by accident. Another exciting part of beginning of our school year was the steam lab, and you just heard a bit about the work involved in that through the custodial staff at the middle school. It was built in just a few short months over summer break. It required a Herculean effort by our custodial maintenance staff as well as our planning committee that included Dave Gagnart, Kim Coyle, Kevin Ross, Camille Westfall, Todd Helming, Laurel Schwartz, Matthew Guarino, Steve Bustle, and myself. And thank you to Steve Lapage, who serves on the CAPS Technology Committee, for responding to CAPS's request to have our technology featured on a Channel 8 publication. We were asked to speak about our steam lab and our One-to-One Chromebook Initiative. I want to share with the Board again that this evening that we're very proud of the work that we've done and I want to share the actual Channel 8 report with you so you can see what we've done.
As the kids go back to school this year, a lot of them are going to be dealing with more technology than ever before.
That's right. News 8 anchor Darren Kramer shows us how technology has changed in the way Connecticut teachers teach and how students are learning.
These are our sixth graders right here. Crack one open, show me what's going on.
As teachers in Plainville got ready for the school year late this summer, their secret weapon is in these blue bins.
They get that in the charger, yeah, in the case, and they check it out in homeroom and have it for the whole school year.
They are basic laptop computers. In Plainville and a number of other districts in the state, every kid, starting in third grade, gets his or her own computer to use and take home for the school year. Teachers call that one-to-one, one device for one student, and it's changing how kids learn.
They're pushing themselves to learn more, to do more. I have kids that come in and they're like, "Miss Coyle, I'm just done XYZ," and it's something that completely blows me away. They always exceed my expectation in a wonderful, wonderful way because they have access to that technology, not just here in the classroom, but wherever they are.
It allows teachers to do very creative things in the classroom on a smart board because things, kids can all hook up to it and be connected that way. Teachers can see what kids are doing on their Chromebooks through a program called Hipara. So, if anyone suddenly goes to a different site, we can redirect them back.
We do have a smart board need to the classrooms.
Chip Doumay is the superintendent of the Amity School System and a member of the State Commission for Educational Technology. He says there has been an evolution of how computers are used in the classroom. The idea of a computer lab like this with a bunch of PCs facing a wall doesn't really make sense anymore. And a number of schools have been having kids bring their own devices from home, but he says that doesn't really work either.
15 of them have a tablet, five may have a laptop, and, and two may have phones and three may have nothing. So, trying to develop a lesson that incorporates technology, but everybody doesn't have the same access, is very difficult.
Doumay says a computer for each student lets teachers customize learning for each kid.
Before, we might have done some generalization about where kids were. What's the class average? All right? Now, we have a class average, but we also know where specific weaknesses are and specific strengths are for kids.
Here's one way that technology can really customize learning in the classroom. These are news articles, recent, about fixing Big Ben. Both real articles, both about the same topic, but the two of them are written at different reading levels. So, different students can both learn about the same topic at their own speed and their own rate. In Plainville, one of the most technologically advanced districts in the state, a gift from a donor has allowed them to branch out beyond laptops to technology and the arts, with everything from computerized music labs to 3D printers, a television studio, and a space to work on things like robotics and hydraulics. But they say it's not about the technology, it's how the technology supports good education.
It's not just about the stuff, it's about the process in which the kids are learning, which is amazing.
I'm Darren Kramer, News 8.
In case you didn't notice, we got Mr. Guarino's back. And Mr. Lapage's pants were featured. But I want to reiterate that at the end of the video, I hope you all heard Darren Kramer call us one of the most technologically advanced school districts in the state. Go, Plainville Community Schools, yay! Again, nothing happens in a vacuum. We had to get the support from the Board and the community to make all of these things happen. Another very exciting...
Another very exciting development this school year is our preschool program. Our preschool program has grown substantially as a result of the expansion to full day, full week. Currently, we are at capacity at all three schools with one hundred and forty-four preschool students. It's important to note that at the end of the last school year, we only had one hundred and four preschool students. We currently have more pre-K kids district-wide than kindergartners. At Taflon, we had to move a kindergarten teacher to preschool due to the higher enrollment there, and most importantly though, parents have commented to both administration and the media that they are thrilled with the access to a full-day, full-week pre-K program in our schools. And I've said to the board on numerous occasions what that will do for our children long-term in terms of their growth and development. Enrollment overall is up in Plainville this year. As of the first week of school, we are up by close to forty students. While much of this can be attributed to pre-K, the middle and high school numbers are also up slightly from last year. We'll continue to discuss enrollment throughout the school year as it does inform our budget process. Now I'd like to invite Assistant Superintendent Steve LaPage up. He's going to present about the process of revising our teacher evaluation plan, which is a part of our strategic plan for this year. Based on survey results and teacher feedback, we realized there was an increased need for peer feedback within the process. Mr. LaPage will explain how he and his committee spent months revising and reviewing the plan. I am pleased that he will share the outcome of his work. Mr. LaPage.
Also, no more paper speeches, you just resorted right to the computer?
It's all technology. We're one of the best technology districts in the state.
See what our kids teach the adults?
Just being exemplar here. Greetings. It was a very nice start to the evening. I hope I won't put a damper on that with this, I think it's gonna be exciting, so bear with me, this is good stuff.
Exciting and short?
I will say, in the rehearsal today, it was about seventeen minutes, which is good for me. The actual plan is over a hundred and twenty pages long, and I know that because I read it about fifteen times since last March and revised it, and I know it all too well, but I'm gonna condense it and make it, try to give you all the bells and whistles, so. This plan is more than just a new acronym, and it was actually a convocation if you're there. We ended up dropping the first P. We all know we're Plainville, but it's Edsep now rather than PTED, which is, I know, it's Educator Development Support and Evaluation Plan. And the word order is important, I'll get into that in a second.
You should've just shortened it to TED. That would've been easier, just saying.
That's all, I'll tell why I can't do that. So a brief overview, and you know me, I'm very honest, so it will be brief. As Dr. Bremm said, everything starts with our vision document that many or most of you worked on last fall at about this time, as we met many times, creating and crafting our district vision. So in the core being to inspire, prepare, and engage our students, but not just our students, but our faculty and staff and administrative team working together under those same goals. So the word order and the reason in that name, and a lot of time was actually in discussion, was placed on the name of this plan. It's really more of an emphasis is meant to be on the development and support of our educators. It's not just teachers, the other thing was called PTED, Plainville Teacher Evaluation and Development Plan. It's not just teachers under that plan, it's all certified staff, so we have a lot of different positions that aren't necessarily directly in the classroom, but they're still measured under this, and this plan is meant to help them develop and grow as well. So it is now the Development Support and Evaluation Plan. This is just a quick snapshot at last year's ratings, if you will. So every year I have to submit, or whoever the assistant superintendent has to submit a report to the state, the EEDC report, that just gives a macro rating of what we had at each school and what we had as a district for all of our educators. No names attached, just the rating, the number of positions in each school and the rating. So this is where we came out. So ninety-eight percent of our educators were either proficient or exemplary, and it's not, it's not easy to be proficient or exemplary. You have to work really hard, set ambitious goals and attain them. So this plan is really more about continuing to develop and support our educators to move them from proficient to exemplary and getting everybody on exemplary. That would be, that would be ideal. As you can see, we have a few in the developing below standard, and you know, the plan is also for evaluation, so when necessary, that's used as a, as a way of helping us and helping teachers who are maybe new in their career to decide if this is the right career for them. So that does happen at times, but as you can see, the majority of our educators fall in the proficient exemplary range. So goals for the new plan, when we were talking about the plan, based on our panorama surveys from, that are completed every year by educators and by students and by parents and community members, and before the strategic planning, the thought exchange process really brought this to light as well, and we discussed it at our strategic planning meetings, that our educators are really looking for more voice, more, more peer voice, peer-to-peer voice regarding their practice and opportunities to learn from one another, so more flexibility and options. So just a few goals for our plan going into this, were innovation and flexibility in the plan, better use of teacher leadership skills, and we have some amazing teachers who serve in leadership roles, improved and more meaningful feedback to those teachers and educators, development of peer coaching opportunities, I'll talk about that later, that's a new position, updated framework in observation forms, and I'll explain what that means later, but now we're basing it directly on the newest CCT, Connecticut Common Corps of Teaching, and then also action research as a, as a new and improved method for really setting a one-to-three-year plan and putting that into action. So the long road to change. It all started, as I said, I'm sorry, with the panorama surveys, with getting feedback from our educators about how we can improve the plan, and then also from thought exchange, and then from there, talking as a committee. Actually, Maureen and I met with Kim Odette from the State Talent Office, from the State Department of Ed in November, and we said, "Based on all this feedback, we'd like to have some, some flexibility. What can we do with this plan that you will allow, that you'll approve, because the state has to approve our, our plan?" So that was a very fruitful conversation, it gave us a bit of an understanding of what we can do and what we can't do. From there, I recruited, I chaired the committee, I recruited over twenty, I had twenty-three representatives from all the schools. We had teachers in different grades, different positions, different schools, school administrators, district administrators, kind of a smaller strategic planning group, if you will, not community members in this group, but it was everyone else. We had many, many sessions, one evening session and five sessions altogether, where we, first we brainstormed a three-page, single-spaced list of things that we wanna change about the program and things we want in the new plan. From there, did a lot of synthesizing and really refining what we wanna do. Hundreds of hours of revision work, that's not an exaggeration, I can assure you, it's quite a bit of work going through what you have and making it something new that's, that meets our needs. Submission of the executive summary in first draft to my committee, once that was all created and we reviewed that together and made further refinements, and then it went out to the entire Plainville Community Schools faculty for feedback. For the most part, I only heard positive feedback, and they're looking forward to some changes, so we'll see. I go to all faculty meetings this week, and I'll be presenting this to the faculties. We'll see how that goes. Continued revision, polishing, and editing throughout. We had to change all the forms to accurately reflect the new plan, so I worked really closely with Mark Alfano over the summer. If you're wondering what I do in the summer, that was one of the tasks, we had to go through the entire Talented service system and change all the forms over. And then three more submissions to the state and feedback and conversations with them, and we're on a first-name basis, we may start vacationing together, but I got to know the members of the State Talent Office really well, and they, they were, they couldn't be more supportive or happy with what we're doing, they think it's great. So they approved our plan tentatively with Board of Ed approval tonight, and we'll, we'll go from there. So this is the, the list of the members of the committee, and I won't keep it up there for too long. You'll have this, I can share this whole presentation with you if you wanna watch it over and over again, or you can join me at the schools this week. But you can see we have a representative committee from all the different schools and different, different positions, but they're really instrumental to providing their voice, their insight based on their position, their experience as a, as an educator in the plan, and it was really, it was really instrumental to shaping the plan to be what it was and to doing a lot of the work along the way. So what remains unchanged or similar? The basic components of the plan, there's still student learning objective requirement, there's still a whole school goal requirement, performance and practice goal, based on your, based on your individual skills and attributes as an educator, and then the parent feedback piece, and I'll get into those a little bit. The primary evaluators, our administrative group still has the, they still have the responsibility to give the final evaluation rating. You're gonna see a lot of creative things with peers observing peers and giving feedback to peers, but ultimately, the administrator must give the final rating. Non-tenured educators, non-tenured educators in the first two years have three formal observations and one review of practice, and those are done by the primary evaluator. And then we still use the Talented system that I talked about, and I'll show you a picture of what that looks like in a bit. And it must be approved by the State Department of Ed. So this is the, this is the graphic that you may or may not have seen our prior plan. It's basically broken into two parts, the blue and the green, uh, blue and the yellow, I'm sorry. It's been a long day. So the, the blue part are the student growth and development pieces, the whole school goal, and then where the SLOs or student learning objectives are, that forty-five percent, and the five percent making up half. The bottom half are teacher practices and their professional growth that links to their professional development plan that they put into place, their self-design that they do aligned with that, and then there's a, a parent feedback piece is ten percent, where you set goals to improve parent communication based on your building goals. One thing I should note that changed, in the prior state, prior state requirements, the results from the standardized assessments were linked, were going to be linked directly with teacher ratings and teacher effectiveness ratings. So depending on who you had in your class and how, how well-prepared they were and how well they did in those tests, it could've impacted you as an educator. It was a poorly designed plan from the beginning because you deal with all kinds of attributes and factors you can't control. That was taken away in April, it was voted to be taken away. So now, the results are still important and they're still meaningful, but they're used, to be used to shape professional development and goal-setting to get the kids at a different level, but not holding you personally accountable for some things that are out of your control. So I'm not gonna read through these, but this is just a breakdown of the student growth indicators, that fifty percent, the SLOs, it used to be two, now there's only one required, which is a, a reduction for the teachers and educators. They can be more focused in their goal-setting, they can select two if they like. The whole school learning indicator, as I said, five percent, that's usually set based on the school improvement plan, which is developed by the, typically by the principal and the leadership team for the school, and it's centered around the district vision. And then, as I said, the educated practice indicators, those are, those are related to your individual strength as a teacher or an educator, and how, what you're gonna do to improve in those areas, you set goals around those particular areas to work on during the year. And then the parent feedback piece, as I said, ten percent, usually about improving communication with parents, helping parents become more effective in support of their, of their children, and things of that nature. So some specific changes, this is what it was in the past, framework was more focused on what the educator was doing, the specialist position observations were really not sufficient for providing the feedback we needed, and there was, there were two SLOs required. Now, as I said, there's one SLO required, each as an individual measurement of growth and development, an indicator of academic growth and development. There's a, a new peer coaching model, there's, we're using the latest state framework, the CCT, which the committee recommended as a, as an aligned way of doing this, because team, all new teachers have to go through the team beginning teacher process, using that document as well, and it just makes more sense, it's a good document. And then we improved our observation framework for the specialists. Formerly, there were more traditional methods of observation with the principal or assistant principal going in and observing and giving feedback. There was a seldom-used action research program, and then the reviews of professional practice were really not used as effectively as they could be, and I'll explain what that is in a minute. And we have a lot of flexibility with that now. So we're encouraging the use of videotaping. It's a little bit scary to see yourself, but there's nothing better than watching yourself, maybe I'll watch this later and see how much I can shorten my speech next year. Complimentary peer observers and peer coaches will, will be able to conduct observations, and they can choose to have that count or not to have it count, so there's a little bit of freedom there to take a chance, take a risk. You want your peer to see you teaching and give you feedback, but you're without that fear of, you know, necessarily being evaluated on that, but if it goes really well and you think that's something you, you'd like to highlight, you can submit it for, for, to be counted toward your, your reviews. An improved action research plan, expanded use of professional reviews. Now this was our prior framework that I mentioned, all teachers complete, there are thirty-nine indicators, I showed you two, and there's, there were six domains based on the former CCT, they've changed the CCT. So now it's, there are four domains in the new one, and they're much more student-focused, I don't know if you can read that from there, but it really talks about what the student is doing in response to the teachers, in, in response to what the teacher's doing. So it's really the impact on the student. And there are now four domains, two that can be observed in the classroom and two that are more outside of the classroom, preparation, professional responsibility, professional development, things that you can't really observe in a classroom. And that's where the reviews of practice come into play. So there are two ways that educators can receive feedback and be basically, be rated on their performance. One is through observations, we have formal, informal, and peer, and the other is through reviews of professional practice. And there are certain guidelines the state requires on how many of those you must have. This is based on that framework that I showed you, that's really student-focused. It takes the proficient level of that framework, and it, we used it as a form where we're going into classrooms and looking for those behaviors, looking for those attributes, I should say, in the classroom. This is what the administrators will use, it's what peers will use when they go in and evaluate and give feedback. The other is the reviews of practice. Now these are, I won't read the whole list, but you can see there are many ways of, there's a lot of work that goes on outside of direct teaching, and now this will give an added method of providing feedback to the teacher, of providing credit for the hard work that's going on outside of a typical classroom setting that really makes the classroom and the students learning more effective. So things like the videotaped self-reflection, if you're holding a group counseling session, all the preparation that goes into that, presenting at a professional development workshop, so you can receive a review of practice on that. This is the, a snapshot of the Talented program. This is where all the, all the forums are housed, so each teacher has a folder, and each administrator has a folder, and we can assign these. Mark Alfano is unbelievably helpful, we worked really closely on this, but these are all assigned, so everyone knows exactly what they have to complete, and administrators know what they, who they have to observe and whatnot. This is the new peer coaching, just quickly about this. Peer coaches must have five years of experience, they must be tenured educators with two years of consistent exemplary ratings, and this is really an honor to be selected. You can ask to be one, you can be selected as an administrator to be one, but you need administrative approval, and this position will, people in this position, you probably, we probably won't have fifty people in this position, it's not, it's gonna be a smaller select group, but they can really guide the work of their peers. It's really a feather in their cap about their professional practice. They can assist them in developing toward achieving, achieving their goals. And the things that they do, instead of observing them teaching, because we already know they're tremendous teachers, there'll be limited observation requirements for peer coaches. Instead, they'll be rated more on those reviews of practice, assisting their peer, helping them with a lesson plan, going in and observing, things like that, so you can get credit for performance outside of direct instruction. This new idea related to videotaping your instruction and watching it and giving feedback about yourself, either to your administrator or to a peer, this is another way of, of getting those, of really being reflective and looking at what you do, especially with peers, because they, they walk in the same shoes that you do. And then the action research model is a, is a combination, one-to-three-year plan, you could do it as, as an individual, you can do it as a small group, you can do it as a department if you so choose, where you're really looking at a bigger picture item and working toward that with, with different components that you would report on each year, and it can include many elements of the, of the plan that I, that I shared already. So hopefully there'll be, there'll be educators who take us up on this, it's a great opportunity. So ultimately, why does it matter, and why am I spending time here sharing this with you, besides we need your approval? So the value of the plan really talks, it really lends to, how, how well does this plan provide opportunities to do the things that the surveys are saying that we weren't doing well enough, providing opportunities for peer, peer-to-peer conversations, for, for mentoring, for, you know, for a peer coach to help another, another educator to grow, for taking professional risks, and then just working as a system to make everyone better in the classroom and in their practice that our students are learning at a higher level. And we will, this will be, this is an ongoing living document, so we're gonna change it as necessary, you can make small amendments without a major overhaul, and I expect we'll probably have to do that once we live with it. We'll conduct, I'm gonna conduct a survey later in the year to find out how it's going and, and look at that. And then, as I said, it's an evolving document, and we just need state approval, and we'll be up and running. be up and running in your approval. So, I know I probably went, it was very brief, you want me to give you some more? There's a lot, and if I, if I were to share the entire document with you, it's riveting, but it's, uh, there's a lot involved.
It's just so short for you.
Cheryl.
He saw me take my hook out.
Any questions at all? Yes, sir.
When do you expect the plan to be implemented? You say it has to be approved by us, approved by the state, and then, by the new year, you're thinking?
Uh, actually, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, if it's approved. The state has approved it already tentatively, I just need the official stamp of approval from our Board of Education, and I'll be presenting it at, starting, well, presumably, starting tomorrow morning at seven forty-five at Wheeler School, and three o'clock at the middle school, Wednesday at the high school, and afternoon Wednesday at four fifteen at Toffelon, so four more of these, and then, one at Linden coming up soon, too. Any questions at all that would help clarify, I know it's, there's a lot there.
This is just more like a, it's not necessarily a Plainville question, but it's just a general question. What, what do you think new teachers coming into the profession, what do you think their expectations are for their evaluation process? You know, looking at this, I mean, you might expect them to run out of the room screaming with their hair on fire or something, but I, I just wonder if new teachers are being prepared for the kind of intensity that this program now entails.
They are, and actually, I would say, in, well, in some ways, for new teachers, it's, it hasn't changed very much. I conduct one of the observations for all first-year teachers, the building administrative team does the other two, and then, there's a review of practice, but they, they're partnered with a team mentor, so they, they have someone working with them throughout the process of their first two or three years, depending how long it takes them to complete all the modules. There's a lot of support there, and the, the whole point of the plan change, this is not meant to be a gotcha plan, or, or, I think by now, our faculty understands that when you look at the percentage, and those, those ratings are authentic, they're real, we do calibration activities all the time as administrative team. So, our educators are effective, and if they're not, you know, we work with them and try to get them better, and if it doesn't work out, and sometimes that happens, and it's unfortunate, but, you know, it's also honest, and that's, that's what we have to be. So, I would say, when you look at those ratings, and we look at the level of support from department leaders and from, you know, our, our teacher leaders in our, in our district that are really strong, our principals, our administrative team, they're really not out to go in and deliver this condemning message of, oh, whatever you're doing, this is horrible, you know, it's, how can we help you to get from where you are to where you need to be, and what supports can we put in place? That's, that's the whole point for this improvement in the plan, so I hope everyone sees it as an improvement.
It seems like a more softer approach, I mean that in a positive way, because more interaction, it's not like a gotcha, it's more, we want to help you, we're here to help you develop, it's a cooperative effort, I like that.
Good, that's, that's exactly what we were going for, thank you.
Just a quick question on the videotaping, how, is that growing of, of teachers, you know, sharing that, and is that something that's gone, gone through all the levels from the high school, middle school, to the elementary, or is it?
It's, it's been more prevalent, I would say, at the elementary level thus far, but I could see it expanding, because it really, it's a great opportunity for you to see yourself in action and to talk with a peer who's non-threatening, you know, just by position, not that administrators are threatening people, we're pretty nice for the most part. But just to sit with the peer and say, you know, what, what would you have done differently in that lesson? You know, perhaps they teach the exact same lesson, how'd you teach it differently, your kids seem to do better on it than me. It's a great opportunity that ties in with the PLCs as well. And, and we've, I know, I know Paula at Linden, they've done small groups where they've watched, they've all watched the video of one of their teachers teaching a lesson, and they've given her feedback, so as long as the educator's open to that, it's not a requirement, it's one of those things, you don't want to force that on somebody if they're not comfortable with that particular way of review, but it's a great opportunity for self-reflection.
I would think so.
This is just another statement, sort of along the same lines as Becky's, it sort of gives you a new respect for teachers, because gone are the days that they just come in, teach your children, and go home. I mean, they have to be proficient in technology, and, you know, there's so many demands on their time, that's not necessarily just teaching the child.
Right, no, it's, it's an extremely challenging position, extremely rewarding, that balances that out most of the time, but it is very challenging.
I always had a respect, I said I could never teach children, but really, you have a better respect and understanding today that not everybody can do it.
Absolutely, that's very true. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have any questions to follow up after, and you want to send an email, I'm, I'm open for anything.
We know where you live.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lepage, and later on, under new business, you'll be asked to approve the revised teacher evaluation plan, worked on so diligently by Mr. Lepage and his committee. I would now like to bring up Vicky Trzynski, our Director of Pupil Services, she will be reviewing her, the annual performance report and determinations to special ed compliance. Ms. Trzynski.
Hi, good evening.
Good.
Tonight, I'm happy to share the annual performance report for our Special Education Department. This report is published by the State Department of Education each June. Last May, I was here to share the report that was published from two thousand and sixteen, and I'm excited to be back here tonight to share this year's report. So similar to previous year's reports, I'm pleased to, to let you know that we have met all of the requirements for the general supervision and timely and accurate reporting. This is based on the data from the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, and fifteen, sixteen school years. These requirements ensure that students with disabilities are performing similarly to their non-disabled peers for graduation rates, suspension and expulsion rates, and representation in special education by racial and ethnic group. Other compliance criteria that are included in this report are adherence to the special education eligibility and identification timelines, and the development of transition plans for students who are age sixteen. And finally, the report also includes some performance criteria, based for both preschool students, and then, participation and proficiency on the smarter-balanced assessments for grades three through eight. Additionally, and the chart that you have up there now includes a Plainville Performance Index score. It's based on the English Language Arts performance of third-grade students with disabilities. This aligns with the state performance report. The State Bureau of Education, of Special Education, shows this performance area because a broad analysis of the data across the state shows that students with disabilities have historically performed lowest in the area of English Language Arts and Reading. So while the chart on the screen shows that there was a small decline from last year to this year, remembering that this is a very different cohort of children, so each year we report on a brand-new set of kids, we are still well above the state target, and if you look at our DURG, the range there, we are either second or fifth, depending on the year. So we continue to, to rank very highly as far as students with disabilities in the third grade language arts area. So in light of this report, the Special Education Department, with the support from Leanne Gomindl, our Supervisor for Special Education, and Christina Kiley, who's our Instructional Leader for Special Education, we are continuing to focus on three goals that we've talked about in May. The idea of close monitoring of the identification rate, of how many students are identified for special education, and their performance data. We also want to continue to develop strong collaborative relationships with families and general educations, teachers, to ensure that all students can access the general education curriculum. And finally, we are working hard to reduce the number of students who are placed in separate schools by further developing in-district special education programs and services. This year, we have reallocated some resources to be able to meet the needs of two elementary school students who are previously placed in an out-of-district placement but are now attending Linden Street School. We hope to be able to do the same for several other students during this school year. The full report is in your packet if you have any specific questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thanks, Vicky.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trzynski, Ms. Gomindl, and the entire Special Services Department, that's, a lot of work goes into making sure we're compliant, but more importantly, developing programs that are good and helpful for children, and our, our special education students are performing above state averages, as reported by Ms. Trzynski. And on that note, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the Superintendent or Mr. Lepage? Okay, moving, thank you, moving on. We have our student rep, Nate's back with us, hi, how are you?
Good, how are you? The school year started off pretty smoothly, PHS. I don't think this, uh, what's there? It's been a smooth start to the school year. The first day, freshmen arrived at seven thirty, along with some select upperclassmen volunteers who showed up at this time to help run freshman orientation. They were taken to the auditorium for a little introduction, and then, taken to their homerooms, and where they received their schedules, and a tour of the school from the upperclassmen. In their homerooms, they were able to ask questions from, where's the one hundred hallway, to how do I know what lunch to take, and upperclassmen were able to, like, kind of relax them and really ease them into the school year. Sophomores and juniors arrived at nine thirty, they got their schedules and reviewed school policies in addition to a meeting with administration. And then, seniors arrived finally at ten o'clock, that, where, we went to our homerooms and got our semester one schedules and got ready to start the year. Then, on Friday, September eighth, seniors took part in the annual senior breakfast with class advisors, Mr. Serwinski and Mr. Levecq, along with administration. In terms of academics, students receive final copies of their semester one schedules on the first day of school. Many sophomores, juniors, and seniors are taking anywhere from one to five AP or ECE, UConn classes for either their first or third year. I know, I'm taking five this year, and this is my third year taking those classes. The first two days of school allowed teachers and students to settle into their new classes, and the workload picked up with a fresh start Tuesday morning after Labor Day. Seniors are in the middle of college admissions process, touring campuses and filling out the Common App, as well as registering for open houses. The students are adjusting to their new schedule, and it's not as bad as we all thought. And we're also noticing the ICANN statements on teachers' boards across the school. Athletics, fall sports, all began on Friday with all teams in action. Boy soccer won against Bristol Eastern, six to three. Football had a great outing as they had a very close game where they lost by a score of eighteen to thirteen against Bloomfield. That game came down, came down to one play, that was a good game. Cross-country participated in the, in open meet, where they came in eight out of seventeen. And girls soccer and girls volleyball are looking to pick up their first wins of the season this week. Any questions?
Actually, I just had a quick question. I know you said that the new schedule wasn't as bad as people thought, but I had a friend of mine whose teenage daughter said, my daughter just wanted to let you know, thanks a lot for the change in the schedule, and why did you do that?
It's not that bad, some of the stuff, like, I know I take gym, and the way the rotation works, I have it in the morning all the time, which isn't always the best, because, like, sweaty for the rest of the day. And then, I always have, and then I always have study hall at the end of the day, which is kind of nice, because I get to get a head start on homework, but then again, like, if I have a busy night or something, then like, it's never in the morning, whereas with last year's, it kind of rotated. But it definitely has its pros, like, it's nice having, like, for me, my mornings are math, gym, and Spanish, which are all easy classes for me, so it's kind of eased me into the day. And then, I have AP Lit and ECE Physics in the afternoon, which by then, I'm kind of like, awake. Pay attention a little more, so it definitely makes those classes easier, having them after the other ones.
Did it exercise you in between?
I guess you can't please everybody, right? Thank you. Okay, let's see, we had no, I think we have facilities, policy, finance, turf, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can I just say something on the facilities front?
Sure.
I think that, maybe we can request that we have some tours for our...
Our new steam lab?
Exterior facilities now, too, as well as some interior stuff, but could set that up.
We sure can.
Bustle, I'm short.
Okay, um, let's see, no finance, let's see, turf.
Yes, I do have a turf report, and to Mrs. Trall's point, we are planning a open house for the steam lab in early October. The press has actually been contacting us to kind of come in and see it, so, and in addition, we can do other facility areas, I'll find out from the board which areas they'd like to see. As for turf, we had our meeting on August thirtieth, and we heard an update about the track, which has since been virtually completely finished. It was looking great on Friday evening for the football game, and there are a few minor issues called the punch list that they're working on, but for all intents and purposes, it's back to where we need it, and it looks great. We also discussed advertising on the turf field. That was put on hold because of the problems with the track. The backers felt strongly that they didn't want to begin advertising while that track was still under repair, but now that that is concluded, they are eager to get that work going, so letters are going out to local businesses, seeing if they'd like to advertise on the field, and it's important for the board to know that a portion of the proceeds from that advertising will go to the turf fund, to make sure that we have ample resources should repairs be needed down the road. The committee also discussed a sound system. The sound system for the athletic fields has been ordered and will be installed in-house, as I mentioned earlier, it's, it certainly saves us a lot of money when we can do that, so that should be getting installed very soon. We also talked about a wireless scoreboard. Athletic Director Farrell wanted to request that we purchase a wireless scoreboard, so that when we have guests using our field, they don't have to go into the main headquarters upstairs, it kind of keeps it in good shape for, for our local folks. So the turf committee did approve a purchase of a wireless scoreboard, which will cost one thousand twenty-eight dollars, so that was approved. And I believe that concludes everything that we talked about during that evening meeting.
I just had a question about the track, how long, the first one that was laid down, how long before that started bubbling that, did we have an issue?
Pretty much right away, Mr. Farrell reported on it over the last summer, and kept watching it, and kind of thinking, what, what is this? And then, we realized it was a problem.
Oh, no, I was just wondering, I was wondering how long we had before we felt like we were safe and we didn't have to worry about that again.
I, I think we could already tell a distinct difference in how this looks, and there was a tremendous amount of oversight as that was being repaired.
And then, I know there's, I know there's that, I don't know, what is it, a hundred and thirty-something thousand that's left to be used of the grant, is that, is that...
Yes, we actually talked about the balance of the grant, or the initial allocation, I believe it is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and that's, to make sure we've got all the costs covered for the sound system, which I think we're close to that. I forgot to mention, too, we also talked about the facilities charges, we decided to raise our facilities rates to not only take into account, you know, costs of maintenance and costs of, you know, air conditioning and other utilities, so we have sent out our new rates to all of our patrons and have not heard a lot back as to, but they all went up a fairly significant amount, especially for non-partner organizations. But yeah, I believe it's about a hundred and thirty thousand left in the turf fund.
Is there a limit on that? Like, how long do we have to, I know that we, that we have some various things that they're looking at, like, I know they wanted to update some of the bathrooms or something, but, like, is there a limit on, a time limit?
I am not aware of any limit on that, we have spent the state grant that was received, but the money from the Tinty Foundation, I don't know that there is a limit on that.
Okay.
Are you aware of anything with that?
No, okay. All right, thanks. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, moving on, we have the high school report, Foster?
Yeah, the PAC will be meeting this Wednesday night, the thirteenth, that have not met, you know, since the board last met.
Okay, thank you. Toffelon, Nicole?
Um, same, they're meeting this Thursday.
Okay. Linden, Deb?
Um, same thing here, they will be meeting on Wednesday, the thirteenth, at six PM in the Linden Media Center.
Okay, middle school, Crystal?
We'll be meeting tomorrow night at seven.
Okay, Wheeler, Mr. Batcheldred sent out a list, let's see, the first, their normal PTO meeting is, is the last Wednesday of the, I mean, yeah, the last Wednesday of the month, but this year, the first one is next Tuesday, the nineteenth, at six PM. Then, on nine twenty on Wednesday, there's an early dismissal, because there's an open house from six to seven thirty that night. Then, the next PTO meeting is Wednesday, October fourth, at six PM. I'm not understanding the new schedule, I'll have to ask, because neither one of these days are the normal days they were using. And then, the last thing is on, oh, that same day, October fourth, they're having PLC Day for teachers, so there's also an early dismissal at one thirty. That's all I have. That's all I have. Correct Council, Becky?
So the first meeting of the Correct Council will be September 20th.
Okay, the Chair's report. I just had two things. One thing, I know we didn't talk about this, because it happened during the summer, but I just wanted to thank Dr. Brummett and A.D. Farrell for their transitioning of the Pettit Road Race from GE to now being at the high school. I happen to volunteer for the first time. I'd never done that. And so many people were so happy that it was at the high school, and they thought it was very successful. And a lot of the people that were working there, Joan can probably attest to this, because they were on the grass in the front, they weren't standing on pavement. I mean, it was 25 degrees cooler than it normally is, so, in that respect, it was good. But they were saying that it was better for them standing, all the people that were registering people all day, so. But so many people came up, and they said they were so happy with it being at the school, and they hope it continues to stay there. So I just wanted to say thank you to you. And the second thing is, I just wanted to just, there is no update on the state budget, but I know there's been a lot of uncertainty around the state, because nobody knows what's happening. So I contacted Representative Pettit and Senator Martin, just to see, hey, do you have an update? Do you want to come, I was, I didn't let you know this, because they both said no. But I asked them if they wanted to come and just update us on anything that was going on. And they said that they tentatively thought that there would be a vote this Thursday, but it's just a wait-and-see kind of thing. But again, I want to thank Dr. Brummett, because she's had a very cool head about this. And what we're going to do is, whatever happens, good, bad, however much happens, we will sit down as a board with Dr. Brummett. We will discuss it. We will talk with the council, and Sam, and Rob Buden, and we will sit down as a town, and we will figure out how to make this work, whatever happens. So I don't want people to worry. I absolutely agree with what she said at the new teacher orientation breakfast, that we were still doing our hiring, we're still having our new teachers come in, and we will wait to worry, and we will deal with the budget, whatever happens as it comes down the road. I know a lot of districts did do things in advance, and we didn't want to, we didn't want to really take away from our budget, because once we do that, we can't have it back, once something's passed and it doesn't come to fruition. So I just want people to know that we absolutely know what's going on. We're in constant contact. I know Maureen has her organization she goes to, and she's also in contact with Representative Pettit and Henry Martin. So just to let you know, we are on top of it. As soon as we know something, we will absolutely work on that, and you will know as well, so. That's it on that. Let's see, next board open forum. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say?
I do.
Oh, go ahead.
I would just like to thank all the students that helped at Bloom Fest. They worked really, really hard in the fireman's tent, and I got a chance to work with them. And it was hard work, but it was a lot of fun. So I'm glad that they all participated.
And we had, we had many board members, Becky, and Foster, and Cheryl and her husband, many board members that helped out in the food booth. And I heard many people say, the firemen especially, say they could not do it without volunteers. So between the students and our board members, we were all there serving people the food.
I just wanted to I just wanted to say congratulations again to Cindy Ross. She started as the school nurse at Toffelon the year I sent two kindergartners to Toffelon. And she was always kind. I had one little one who sometimes got that stomach ache, and immediately thought she should go home, and I would get the call that says Sarah's here. But I think she's going to be fine in a few minutes, so we'll call you back if you need to leave work. But she's been, she's wonderful. She's served the town, the schools, the children so well. And so we wish her, we wish her all the best in the future, a long and very happy and healthy retirement.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm going to ditto that, having, having had to deal with three little Tyrell urchins. It was not easy, because my kids, I don't know what it is, but there's always health issues in my house. And Cindy Ross was not only a great school nurse and did everything you'd think she should do, but some of the things that Mrs. Legoit mentioned, like, she was at every PTO function. As a matter of fact, when, I think, I don't know if I didn't know, oh, it was her kids, too. She would bring her daughters, and her daughters would be working there. You know, we couldn't get parent volunteers to serve ice cream or something, but they'd always be there. So, you know, Cindy was just really a very dedicated member of the Toffelon community and the Plainville community in general, and a really good person to have in the school. So certainly will be missed. And then lastly, I just, I want to, okay, I'm not a big sports person, all right? But I do know, I watch football occasionally. I know what football is. I know how the game is supposed to be played. And I have to say, I went to the football game this Friday, and I was pretty impressed, because these guys, these guys were playing against a team of very, you know, somebody said, Jesus, those look like professional athletes out there, big, big guys. And they were on their knees. I realized at one point that the kids from the other team literally got on their knees. This is not good. But they really did. They just, you know, they really, it was like, it was extremely exciting. It was a great game. And even though they didn't, you know, they didn't win the game, they really did have a lot of heart. And I'm sure it's something that would, that they should very well be proud of and hold their heads high. So that was a lot of fun.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing nothing else, we'll move on. We have the special ed report, but Sam doesn't really talk about it till October. Sorry. Sorry about that. No, you're good. You're all right. You're good. Okay, so now we just need a request for C, the revised teacher evaluation plan.
I'd like to make a motion to request the approval of the revised teacher evaluation plan.
Second. I have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, now we just need a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion for the consent agenda.
All right, a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
First and a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you, and have a good evening.